Find you a place to sit, we'll get started. Thank you very much. Calls the meeting to order. Ms. Whitby, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ross is absent. White?
Here.
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Fouch?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
President.
According to his presence, sir.
Thank you. I invite you to stand for a prayer and pledge by Alderman Baxter.
Good Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to gather and conduct affairs in business of the city of North Little Rock. Lord, we're just thankful that we live in America, however, Lord, we know that America is hurting. We just ask that you would be with each and every American out there, give us peace and understanding of each other. Just ask, Lord, as we go throughout this meeting, that we would make wise decisions that you would find pleasing in your eyes. Forgive us where we failed you, for all these things, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second. On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting and the special call. White?
Here, yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Communications, anyone want to pull a communication?
Ms. White, four?
Number four. Okay. Anybody else? How about a motion to accept one, two, three, five, and six? So move.
Second.
On the motion, Ms. Whitby.
And White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number four, did you want that read?
Yes, please.
An email communication from Alderman Ross dated July 5th regarding today's meeting. It's asked that this be added to this communication, Mayor Smith and council members, "I will not be able to attend the council meeting on July 11, 2016, but wanted to express my opinion concerning O-1639. The applicant has done a very good job of improving his current business property at 2410 Pike Avenue. I'm very grateful to him for the improvements to the area. Special use O-1639 is to add a car lot to his current business with only four cars for sale permitted. Even though the special use is only for four cars, I feel this will set a precedent along Pike Avenue. There are numerous businesses along Pike Avenue that would be able to obtain a special use to sell cars to if this is approved. As a representative of the area, I do not feel this is an appropriate special use for this area of Pike Avenue." Debbie Ross, Alderman Ward, one.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go into the special call.
This is an email that was sent on Friday, July 8th, from City Attorney Jason Carter to members of the City Council. Purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, July 11, 2016, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-16118, A Resolution Approving Settlement of the Case of Butler versus City of North Little Rock and for other purposes. Note that this resolution is intentionally drafted with an absence of information. The negotiated settlement of this case is not complete. There will be more information provided at the meeting. O-1645, An Ordinance Authorizing Execution of Documents Guaranteeing Payment for Wholesale Power Contracts to Clearing an Emergency and for Other Purposes. This pursuant to Section 2-48-2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code and was sent to all council members who have replied to the same.
Okay, let's call the first one.
R-16118, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A Resolution Approving Settlement of the Case of Butler versus the City of North Little Rock.
Counsel, it's all yours.
As you recall, some time back, you know, we had the issue with House of Three that wanted to establish a business in one of our residential zones. That case has resulted in litigation. I'll kind of talk you through some of that briefly. But as I said, I didn't want to put facts within the resolution that was submitted because negotiations weren't finalized. Negotiations were finalized today, but they are still subject to your approval tonight. So as I was saying earlier, Mr. Butler, you know, he sought to establish a business in an R1 zone, providing a residence and companion care for persons who were aging and may be disabled, that he calls House of Three. He sought and received permission from North Little Rock initially. We gave him permission to have that business, but then denied permission because you can't have a business in an R1 zone. So it didn't take us long to tell him that he couldn't have that business, but in the window of time that we did give him that information, they had executed a contract on piece of property. He initially came here seeking a zoning change in order to have a business in an R1 zone. The City Council didn't like the sound of a zoning change. We did adopt reasonable accommodation procedures after that, and he followed the reasonable accommodation procedures to request that through our Board of Adjustments, and his request was denied. After that, Mr. Butler sued the city under the Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. His claim of damages is approximately $1 million. So with the, that's anticipated profits from his business, his attorney fees, he's got a list of different things that he's claiming as damages. We have asserted in the past and continue to assert that there was no Fair Housing Act violation, there was no Americans with Disability Act violation. We rely on the fact that Mr. Butler is not handicapped, and he's designed, what he's done is crafted a business that's rather profitable. And the business model is based on being, having a number underneath governmental oversight, which we felt is inappropriate. His request would require us to make a change to our land use, and we don't think the law requires us to do that with our land use scheme by putting for-profit businesses in R1 residential zones. We don't think that's required. And also, we don't think that his request is either reasonable or accommodating to persons with disabilities. That being said, I need to inform you that the law surrounding Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disability Act and how it relates to zoning is not altogether clear. It's rather immature. There are very few cases that give us guidance. So while we are very confident in our case, I can't tell you that a victory would be certain if we litigated the case out. I'm concerned with the two factors that I've mentioned earlier. I'm a little concerned with the fact that we did initially tell Mr. Butler that he could open his business. That is a fact. We did initially do that before we had take backs and said, "Well, you're talking about a for-profit business, and that's inappropriate in an R1 zone." And also, while we've received CDBG funding for a long period of time, a condition of CDBG funding is to have a reasonable accommodation process where someone can come in if they've got disability and they can request to be accommodated under our rules. We didn't have that process. Now, we have it now. We have a process in place now, but when the requests originated, we did not have that process in place. So to summarize all of that, we have confidence in our case, but we do have problems with our case, even though, but we are confident, but we do have problems. That's the balance that we hold, and it's uncertain. The judicial process says that you can go try your case and find out what happens there, or you can control your conflict between the parties with a settlement agreement. That's what's being proposed tonight. The settlement is for $70,000. That's the cumulative of all damages settled, all in and all done. We have agreed with Better Fair Housing Training, and he has agreed that he will not seek other reasonable accommodation processes in North Little Rock. He will take his business model elsewhere. So that is the sum of the settlement.
Thank you. Very good explanation. Do I have a motion? How about a motion?
How about a motion?
Charlie and Bruce, thank you very much.
Now, one question.
Question.
Mr. Carter, you did say that Mr. Butler and our other parties have agreed to the settlement, and...
Yes. That was one of the reasons I felt like it would be inappropriate to put additional facts, as I just narrated to you. I didn't want to put those additional facts in the resolution while those matters were still a matter of debate. So I thought it was more important to narrate to you those facts after they had been agreed to by the parties. I shouldn't say the facts, but the settlement arrangement had been agreed to by the parties, subject to approval by this body.
We will be introducing legislation to repair the process that we use to offer this accommodations procedure, and if one other thing we were going to do...
Because the primary concern that we've had is, you know, this business model where, you know, for housing, three disabled people together really has something to do with the fact that state regulations and oversight to protect people who are elderly and with disabilities kicks in at four. And the legislation that we would be developing and proffering to the City Council is to have those regulations attached, no matter the number that you have. So...
So we're going to fix it, basically?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We have a motion, second. Any other comments, questions? On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
Next item, O-1645, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of documents guaranteeing payment for wholesale power contracts, first reading.
Let's take it over to three, and then we'll let James or Jason explain it. How about a motion to suspend?
May we suspend the rules, place it on its second reading?
Second. On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of documents guaranteeing payment for wholesale power contracts, second reading.
May we suspend the rules, place it on its third reading?
Second. On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of documents guaranteeing payment for wholesale power contracts, third and final reading.
How about a motion to get it on the floor, then we'll stop.
So move.
And a second. Okay. Jason, you're... James?
I got it. It's, well, and it is. This pertains to our risk management policy and our relationship with the Energy Authority. So the way transactions work with the Energy Authority is basically that they enter into third-party contracts with wholesale energy providers on our behalf. That stays on their books for contracts from zero to two years. Any contract beyond from two to five years, which the Risk Management Committee would be authorized to engage in, still stays on our books. So essentially, we're giving guarantees to the third party who is providing the power to North Little Rock. So EEA enters into a contract with a third party for our benefit in the three-to-five-year window. We are guaranteeing payment of that contract. The form of that guarantee is still a bit of a matter of debate, but we're getting pretty close to it. But essentially, that's what this ordinance would allow the Risk Management Committee to do. Right now, they can only enter into contracts from zero to two years, except for the two parties that we have EEI agreements with. We could go longer agreements with them, out to five, but with anybody else, if we want to use the Energy Authority's EEI counterparties, then we'd have to be able to provide a guarantee of payment, because those transactions don't stay on the Energy Authority's books.
We...
It's a lot of words. I don't know. You may have questions.
The Risk Management Committee takes their job very seriously, as of course does Jason and me and James, and we talk about this often, the opportunity we have to save money, but not get overzealous. And so I assure you that we're not going to overbuy. We'll never buy more than what we need. We're not going to bet against the market, if you will. So I think the decisions that these, this committee's making are good decisions, and thus that all of us that are on, watching over their shoulders or whispering in their ears. So I think they've got a good grasp on it. I'm very comfortable doing this, and it's just kind of part of doing business, so... Do I have any more questions or comments? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. We've got a couple of people that would like to come up and talk about one of our pieces of legislation, R-16116, and the first one is Steve Winchester. Steve? Former Chairman of the Board of North Little Rock Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you for having me tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to come before the council and the mayor. And, you know, many years ago, we started the Jump Start progress, uh, process in Park Hill and also in Levy. But I'm, as a president of the Park Hill Business and Merchants Association, I would just ask you guys to strongly consider adopting the resolution to continue the progress that we've made with the Jump Start Initiative. 14 months ago, we passed the overlay plan, and we are excited about what's going to happen in Park Hill. So I just come before you asking for you guys to keep on dreaming with us and help us to make a dream come true in Park Hill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, for all of your hard work. John Kriegen?
Good evening. I'm John Kriegen, President of the Historic Park Hill Neighborhood Association and a member of the North Little Rock Jump Start Coalition. I'm here to ask for your support in adopting the resolution to approve and accept the Jump Start Implementation Plan for the revitalization of and improvements to the Park Hill and Levy neighborhoods. These documents have guided the activities of the Jump Start Coalition for the past two years, and they support the design overlay standards the City Council approved last year. Approval of the resolution will help ensure our promise to Metro Plan in regards to Jump Start and our eligibility for Jump Start funds for engineering and construction of the streetscape in Park Hill and Levy in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly want to thank Bernadette and Jenna for all their hard work on this project. Without objection, let's pull that out of order and go ahead and call R-16116. And if Steve would like to go home and have dinner with his wife, he can. No objections? Please call it.
Sponsors are Alderman White and Alderman Ross. A resolution approving and accepting the Jump Start implementation plans for revitalization of and improvements to the Park Hill and Levy neighborhoods in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Motion?
So move.
So moved, sir.
And a second. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank all of you who've been working on this. Dr. Ashley, so good to see you. Thank you for all your hard work, too. Okay, let's go to unfinished business.
Okay, O-1639, Mayor Smith?
I'm going to withdraw that.
Okay. That is withdrawn. All right. New business? R-16113, Mayor Smith, Alderman White, and Ross?
The, we're going to call that tonight, and I'll explain it in a little bit. Go ahead.
A resolution recognizing Monica Walters for her courageous actions during a multifamily dwelling fire at 701 West 18th Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Hey, I'm going to ask, go ahead and give me a motion, somebody.
So move.
Second.
All right. I'm going to ask Ms. White to read the resolution in its entirety. It's a wonderful story, and we certainly want it to be aired out on TV for all those at home.
Resolution recognizing Monica Walters for her courageous actions during a multifamily fire, dwelling fire at 701 West 18th Street in the city of North Little Rock and for other purposes, whereas a fire occurred on the evening of June 16, 2016, at a multifamily dwelling located at 701 West 18th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and whereas Ms. Monica Walters, a resident of the dwelling, noticed smoke coming from a neighboring apartment, and whereas encountering heavy toxic smoke and disregarding her own safety, Ms. Walters took action to her residents and further distinguished herself by leading an elderly resident to a secure and safe area, whereas North Little Rock Fire Chief Jim Murphy and Fire Marshal John Flaster have had firsthand knowledge of Ms. Walters' actions and ask that she be recognized for her notable concern of others and bravery in the face of danger, and there are letters attached as Exhibit A and B. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of North Little Rock, that the North Little Rock City Council hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Monica Walters for her meritus and brave actions in alerting the neighbors at 701 West 18th Street of fire danger and leading an elderly resident to safety.
Thank you, Ms. White. This is certainly a very courageous woman, and we wanted to make this presentation to her tonight. She was unable to be here. Chief Murphy and Chief Flaster are going to personally deliver the proclamation to her when they can set up a time to do that and honor her. So I'm very proud that we have this opportunity. On the motion.
On the motion, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Amen.
R-16114, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the donation of certain real property located at Lincoln and East Washington Avenue in the city of North Little Rock from Hall Properties Incorporated.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? This basically just holds the world together. It was a corner of Hall Manufacturing that he gave to the city a number of years ago for us to cut a new road into the Oakley Port, and he thought at that point in time that we had received that property back then, and then it became an issue on whose responsibility it was to mow this little island, and we found out that that was never done. So basically, we're doing today what we agreed to do eight or 10 years ago, and so that we can legally have Patrick and our guys keep it mowed down. So on the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Height, yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Yes, that is you. R-16115, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating $7,643.59 from Act 833 funds for the purchase of water rescue dry suits for the North Little Rock Fire Department.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-16117, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the amount of liens for grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1641, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance to reclassify property located at 216 West 4th Street in the city of North Little Rock from O-1 to C-6 to allow commercial development by amending ordinance number 7697, first reading.
This is the Manise House, y'all. We've talked about this.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings?
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1642, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the city government of North Little Rock for mid-year 2016, first reading.
How about a motion?
Move for adoption.
Well, we need to suspend...
May we suspend the readings?
Suspend the readings. Okay.
Um, second. On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the city government of North Little Rock for mid-year 2016, second reading.
May we suspend rules and place it on its third reading?
Second.
On the motion.
White?
We already suspended all. We did. We suspended all readings.
We did, okay.
Well, no, that's not what he said.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
If that's what you wanted, if...
Go ahead.
I thought it was suspend all readings.
Go ahead.
What do you want to do?
Read it.
Okay. Taylor, go, we're in the...
I don't know where we are.
We are on the second reading, suspending the rules for the third reading.
So we didn't suspend all readings? Yes.
Thank you. Robinson? Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the City Government of North Little Rock for mid-year twenty sixteen, third and final reading.
Please suspend.
Move to adopt.
How about move to adopt?
So move.
Second.
All right. On the motion.
Um, and you have an amendment.
We have an amendment.
I'm not sure.
Who's gonna explain the amendment?
Mr. Carter.
Uh, I was contacted by, uh, uh, I was actually on National Guard duty today, but I got contacted by Ms. Henderson out of my office, who was saying, uh, that the two things that needed to be changed were in section twelve. Uh, I think this has been distributed, that the number for the electric department is, was incorrect, where it said one oh one, it should say one oh four, and that there was another position that belonged in there with database administrator. Is that correct?
The point is just that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, is that the only amendment?
Yes, those two.
One oh four.
Uh, that's it.
Okay. How about a motion to amend?
Move.
There's a, the amendment is distributed.
And it's in the...
One oh four.
Yeah, when all this... Say that again?
The amendment's been distributed for everyone.
The amendment's been distributed?
Has not been incorporated into this legislation?
I think the one that's printed in red was not, and I think that, uh, uh... Hang on, hang on, hang on. I'm confused.
I move.
So, the one oh one to one oh four was changed already.
Was it?
The one that was missing was the, uh, the indicated in red, database administrator position.
Okay. So, our amendment is that we are adding database administrator, one new position underneath the electric company, right?
That's, that's the amendment.
Okay. All right. How about, who's gonna make that?
The man.
All right. And Mr. Vouch seconded, uh, on the motion to amend.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption, as amended.
Second.
Questions? On the motion.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh sixteen forty-three, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of Pierce Impel Custom Pumper for the North Little Rock Fire Department, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings. We're just helping you, Diane. So, we're doing, we're helping you.
I, I appreciate that. I need all the help I can get. Um, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?